... session. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mr. Kathy Suebat?
Here.
Mr. Rashal Hatcher?
Present.
Mr. James Smith?
Present.
Mr. Steve Frisbee?
Present.
Mr. Derek King?
He's excused.
Mr. Tommy Miller?
Present.
Mr. Gary Tompkins?
Present.
All right. We'll have a moment of silence and after that Commissioner Tompkins will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for leading us, Joel.
I love it when, I love it when Joel Fulton is around saying the pledge. It's awesome.
Can I have a motion to approve the January 16th, 2020 Board of Commissioners organizational session agenda as presented?
No.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the Board of Commissioners' December 19th, 2019 regular session as presented?
Support.
Have a motion and support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is citizen's time. The next item on the agenda is citizen's time. During citizen's time, the board chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the board. A person recognized by the chair shall approach the podium and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizen's time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners tonight? Joel?
Just take care of the elephant in the room right now. My name's Joel Fulton. I'm owner operator of Freedom Firearms over in Battle Creek, Michigan. I'm a resident of Battle Creek, Michigan. Commissioner Smith is my commissioner. Appreciate him. There has been, to my understanding, I was called by the chair of the commission about a day or so ago in regard to Second Amendment sanctuary proposal that has been brought forth. It was not put on the agenda tonight and for good reason. I remember 13 years ago in this chamber, there was a proposition put on the agenda within about 24 to 48 hours notice. And basically, we don't do things like that. We don't do things like that because we learned from that and we said, hey, look, you don't put things on the agenda without giving all the commissioners a fair amount of time to research things. So we don't do that, first of all. And for us to try and do that from the other side is equally as bad or hypocritical if you're going to try and do that. The assault weapons ban had expired in 2006. February of 2007, this commission considered a resolution to support an assault weapons ban at the federal level, which had virtually no meaning and was nothing but virtue signaling. It wasn't okay then for that side to do that, and it's not okay for us to try and do virtue signaling now. We don't need that here in the state of Michigan. We're in an entirely different situation than our folks down in the Commonwealth of Virginia. We have state preemption. We have a constitution that guarantees an individual right to keep and bear arms. And I'm looking at a commission full of people that are in full support of our Second Amendment rights, okay? And that's Republicans and Democrats. Thank you, Commissioner Hatcher, for coming to my range on many occasions. So we have counsel. I don't see an issue. There's no reason for us to fire off shots like this when we should be keeping our powder dry for another time. If we were actually a threat and we needed to do this, then I'm certain my own commissioners would be the first ones to bring this forth. I have a great prosecutor in Dave Gilbert. We have a good sheriff in Matt Saxton. We don't have any elected officials threatening our rights here in Calhoun County. And I don't need anybody else outside of our county coming down into our county and telling us how to do things. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joel.
Hello. My name's Tom Norton. I'm running for Third District Congress. I'm actually the spokesman for Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties. I work in Calhoun three to four days a week. So I actually know a lot about Calhoun. My business started here in Calhoun prior to my current job. So a lot of these folks have gotten to know over the years. So you can say, actually, it's my second home. So I understand Calhoun pretty darn well. What the point of the Second Amendment Sanctuary Counties is about, it is not about what the county board itself is going to do. It's about sending a clear message. This board stands for the United States Constitution. I know that. Every single time I've read the meeting minutes, all of you stand together very well for it. What it is, is about making sure that citizens are represented so that all the constitutional rights that all of us hold dear are protected. The point of the Second Amendment right now with it being under assault in Virginia, the Democrats in Lansing talking about bringing up road flag gun laws, it's not about exactly what we're going to do. It's about making sure that we're protected and sending a message to the state that our counties stand with our residents. I think we can all agree that freedom of speech is important. The right to peacefully assemble is important. Due process of law is important. And without those things, what else is there? What this resolution does is say that we protect all of the amendments of the United States Constitution because everybody in every city and every community has a right to defend their home. What's going on in Virginia, if you've read the bill, a 1953 muzzleloader is considered an assault rifle because a bayonet fixed is to it. That's the type of thing that is happening across this entire nation. So what this resolution is about, it's not about where you guys stand because all of you stand with your community. And I think everybody here can appreciate that. It's about making sure that our rights are defended and sending that message out that all of our rights, from the First Amendment through the 10th, and I'm telling the every amendment that we've added to the United States Constitution, from entering slavery to women's suffrage, all of them are protected. That is what the point of this is about. It's about protecting all of our rights at every single level because government at any level has no right to deny it. So what we need to do is just put the resolution on your next month's agenda to have a discussion about it. There's no damage in having a discussion on it publicly, is there? Make sure that everybody's heard. Don't just go through and pass it tonight. There's a due process that we do in government.
Thirty seconds.
So that's what we're asking. Put it on the agenda next month and discuss it. And make sure that your citizens have representation standing up to them and sending a clear message to Lansing that we don't want to be like Virginia.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who would like to address their commissioners tonight? Anyone else?
I always feel like this podium's too tall for me. Anyway, so Michelle Gregrey lives in Battle Creek, and I stand behind exactly what Tom Norton said. I know that all of you, I've spoken to quite a few of you about this resolution, and I understand that you support the Constitution. And all we're asking, like Tom said, is to evaluate the resolution and put something forward for all of us to get behind as a county together and send a message to the left that we are not going to, you know, have our rights diminished. Tom took away pretty much everything else I was going to say. So, like I said, we would like you to, we understand that, like he said, you have to read it. You can't just throw it on the agenda, and I understand that. So if, at the next meeting, February 4th, if you guys could put it on the agenda so we can discuss this and hopefully pass this and prove, you know, that we do stand for the Constitution as a county, that would be great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Shelly. Is there anyone else? Anyone? Last chance. All right, we'll move on. Any elected or appointed county officials who would like to comment tonight?
Good evening, commissioners, and Happy New Year. This is the first time we've met here in 2020. And I can't believe I'm saying 2020 already. Where has time gone? But a couple of things, since we last met, we had a couple deputies involved with life-saving events in the jail. Just this past Friday, we had a deputy that was watching cues from an inmate that maybe made him concerned, so he was making more checks on that inmate. He found him hanging, so he was rightly concerned. He was able to get him down, start CPR, and saved him. This deputy is a retired fireman, actually, and when I told him, nice job, he said, I finally was able to save somebody that was hanging, which, because normally a fire agency, by the time they arrive, it's well, well too far. But his heads-up work saved that individual. We had another female that attempted to hang herself about a month ago. And the deputy in there was, found her on her normal cell checks. Actually, another inmate helped hold that subject up while the deputy was able to cut her down, start CPR, and saved her as well. So.
Awesome.
Our men and women in the jail and on the road do a great job every day, and I'm blessed, we're blessed every day that they go out and do that job for us. I had a couple of questions on what did the President and Vice Presidents' visit to our county, our city of Battle Creek, cost the county an additional cost. I can tell you at the sheriff's office, it cost additional costs that we would not have spent if they both didn't visit our community. And it's just under $20,000 of additional cost. And all, most, all of that is in payroll, and most of that is in overtime hours. On the day of the event, we had every law enforcement deputy working that day, with the exception of two. And we had corrections staff assisting as well. That event, that went phenomenally well. It is an honor, no matter the party of the President or the party of the Vice President, when they come to visit, it's an honor for them to visit our community. I was concerned that they were both coming and going to be in the same location at the same time. But things went very well. I believe there was two subjects that were arrested that night. And initially, they were asked to leave the interior of the event, and they decided they'd try and sneak back in. The only problem is they tried to do it back where the presidential motorcade was, so that didn't work well for them. They were arrested for trespassing and got out of jail the next day. So relatively minor, no issues. And all in all, I mean, the anti-protest, the protest against the visit, everybody seemed to be calm, as well as the folks there to see our President and Vice President. One last thing this week, most of you heard the Michigan Joint Task Force Jail and Pre-Trial Incarceration Report was given to legislators this past week. There were 18 recommendations for things to do. Oddly enough, when they talk about jail and jail, you would think most of those recommendations would be for the jail to do. There are very few that actually affect the jail, the staff and the operations of the jail, the recommendations. One of those, recommendation number six, would be, would allow the sheriff to be more reactive as opposed to proactive, or more proactive as opposed to reactive with jail overcrowding, which we do a good job of already here. We have the Jail Population Committee. If our local population gets too high, we deal with that. We do that well here. Number seven is basically training law enforcement personnel, jail personnel, dispatch personnel for crisis intervention training. We are way ahead of that in this county. We, all those areas are being trained. Along with the city of Battle Creek, got a grant with Summit Point to, for about $600,000 to do additional training with that. So we're ahead of the curve on that. As usual, here in Calhoun County, we are ahead of things and doing things that it takes a 19-person task force to look into and say, hey, do these things. We're already doing them. Number 16 is one thing that could affect us financially. They want to look at either changing or getting rid of the Prisoner Reimbursement to the Counties Act, which is an act that allows counties to bill sentenced inmates that are sentenced to a county jail. We do that here. We, I shouldn't say that, we don't send them to collections if they don't pay. We only bring in about $10,000 a year to our budget. We bill probably in the millions, so we don't bring in that much, so it wouldn't be that big of a loss. But I don't think they should change that. We'll see. And all these are recommendations, so we'll have to watch and see. But of the others, most of them are law enforcement courts, getting rid of different, getting rid of so many DW, driving while licensed suspended tickets. I mean, everything you don't do, you can get your license suspended for, which has unintended consequences, which, so there's a lot of good things that can come from this. But there's a lot of things we do well here already in Calhoun County, in the courts and in the justice system. So again, I'm thankful. So have a good evening.
Thank you. I had reached out to the 911 director today also about increased costs due to the POTUS visit. He responded back that it was about $2,150 over our normal operating budget for the day, and that was all in wages. So about $22,000, $22,000, so, for the county. Hope that answers the question.
[inaudible]
Right. But it is a community expense. So.
Commissioner, or Prosecutor Gilbert? You know, come here just about every meeting, but one time a year, I get to tell you what we did the year before, and this is that day. Happy New Year. I've got 11 attorneys that do nothing but criminal work in the prosecutor's office. That comes out wrong. They do nothing but criminal prosecution. In our office. Last year, we reviewed those 11 people, including myself and my chief assistant. That makes 11 attorneys that do nothing but criminal law in Calhoun County. We reviewed 5,800 complaints, criminal complaints last year regarding adults. Of those 5,800 complaints, we issued a little bit over 1,600 felonies, a little bit over 2,500 misdemeanors, which are handled by those 11 attorneys, two circuit court judges and four district court judges. Abuse and neglect, we have one attorney who does nothing but abuse and neglect. They did 100 cases more than they did last year. In juvenile court, we're seeing an uptick in crime in juvenile court. We are starting this year, in the next couple of weeks, a juvenile diversion program with the prosecutor's office in cooperation of the juvenile court and also with Reverend McCoy from Battle Creek and a few other ministers and Grace Health. The idea behind that program is, as we look around at other states, we look at our state, first of all, we do have a problem with drug use of our youth. And as we look at states like Colorado, Oregon, California, that have legalized marijuana, juvenile use shot up tremendously in all of those states, and we're expecting the same thing to happen here in Michigan and in Calhoun County. So we are trying to nip it in the bud right away. We're getting a program in place where kids that come into court, before they actually get into court and become part of the system, they can be diverted out, get counseling, and maybe not develop a drug habit that other people in other states tend to be getting. Our CRP unit, we have one attorney who does nothing but child support and paternity cases. Every year, we brag about her. Last year, she actually won a state award for being as good as she is. This year, or in 2019, she got 507 court orders of paternity and support in our county, 507 paternity cases.
Wow.
And support orders in our county, amounting to about $107,000 in child support a month. That doesn't mean it's all being paid, but that works out about $1.2, $1.3 million in child support for the children of our county every year. So things are going well in the prosecutor's office. I complain we're understaffed all the time. You know that. But these people are doing an excellent job. And not just the attorneys, our victim advocates and our support staff are just doing an phenomenal job with what we have. If you have any questions, I'm right here.
No?
That's awesome news.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work. Thank you, Dave.
Absolutely.
Welcome.
For the Deputy Treasurer, I just wanted to remind you guys right now, it's the tax season for foreclosure. And so if you know of anyone in your districts that's struggling with possibly tax foreclosure, or foreclosure, to make sure you send them to our office. We have a lot of girls that will be willing to help them. So that was it.
Thank you. Any other? Good evening.
It's been a while since I've been at the podium, and it does feel very tall. Kimberly Hinckley, your interim Chief Deputy Clerk and Register of Deeds as of January 1. I just wanted to let you guys know a couple of things. One thing is Thursday, January 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00, we are going to have a celebration for Mrs. Anne Norlander for her retirement effective January 31st of this year. From 2:00 to 4:00, down in the garden level, little cake and punch kind of a thing to say thank you for her over 30 years of service.
What was the date of that again?
Thursday, January 30. Communications will be going out tomorrow for everyone, so everybody will know. And then I just wanted to thank our commissioners and our illustrious administration staff. In the Register of Deeds office, in December, we received new workstations. And we took down those tall walls. If you guys have been in there, if you haven't, please come in and check us out. So the tall walls are now down. All the staff can see each other. We can see the door better, which has been an ongoing problem in our office, that we haven't been able to see always people coming in and out of the door. So there's a lot of, can I help you? And no one's there. So I just wanted to thank you all very much. Utilizing that, we've got new chairs, which my back personally thanks you for. So we appreciate the improvements that you guys are doing in the county building. And so please, if you haven't been in there, please come and see us. I want to welcome each and every one of you to kind of come in and see what we do from day to day and see our staff, and they would love to see you. So thank you very much.
Kim, on behalf of the entire board and the administration, congratulations on your appointment, and we look forward to working with you.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, we'll move on. Our next is an election of a vice chair. And the next, for the 2020, the rest of 2020 term, it's a one-year term. The chair is a two-year term. MCL 46.3 in the Board of Commissioners' Rule of Procedure provides that the vice-chairperson of the Board of Commissioners shall be elected to a one-year term. So we'll take some, take nominations. Do I have any nominations for the position?
Yes.
Rochelle?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Kathy Suebat, please, again, reelection.
I have a nomination. Is there a support?
Support.
Have a motion to support. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Quit.
Being, no further nominations, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations for the vice chair.
Support.
Have a motion?
Support.
And support. It's been, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. It's been moved and supported. The nominations are closed. It appears we don't have to have a vote. I would take a motion for consent that every, full support of everyone, if someone would like to make that motion. Cast a ballot.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
Support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We're going to have Commissioner, Prosecutor Gilbert come up and swear Kathy Sue. Next, we have a proclamation. And I'm going to have Commissioner Rochelle Hatcher read that into the record.
Thank you. Whereas the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., was chartered in Battle Creek, Michigan on Saturday, January 12, 1980, with Ms. Willamina Coff as the Midwest Regional Director, present and the membership of the Battle Creek Alumni Chapter, began with 12 original charter members and expanded its service area and memberships within that service area to Calhoun and Eaton County, except for Diamond Dell, Eaton Rapids, Hought, Lansing, Delta Township. And Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a private, not-for-profit organization whose purpose is to provide assistance and support those established programs in local communities throughout the world with the public model of intelligence is the torch of wisdom. The organization is a sisterhood of predominantly black college graduated women, and the sorority provides an extensive array of public service initiatives through its five-point problematic trust of, I'm sorry, educational development, political awareness and involvement, international awareness and involvement of economic development and physical and mental health. And since 1980, the members of the Battle Creek Alumni Chapter have been actively helping to make Calhoun County, Michigan, a better place to live with programs such as Lunch with Santa, recognition of black educators, then scholarships for black female high school graduating seniors since 1984, health information tables and events on breast cancer, diabetes, and heart health, mentorship programs, Delta Academy and Delta Gyms, and the Calhoun County Minority-Owned Business listings since 2016. I, Steve Frisbee, Chair of the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim that Battle Creek Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Sorority, Inc., be recognized for its 40th anniversary and urge all the citizens of Calhoun County to recognize the valuable impact that the Battle Creek Alumni Chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., has made in our communities. Witnessed and signed by Steve Frisbee, Chair. Do I have someone here to present this to?
Let's get a motion. Can I have a motion to approve the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion to support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We do have some folks here, including Lynn Ward-Grey. Come on up and.
Frisbee, you've never looked so good. I just want you to know.
I have hair again.
I know. And you're pretty.
Right.
I mean, like, look at that compared to. We just kind of like, we just kind of like get low.
Oh, we can all stand up.
You want us to stand up high?
Never turned down the offer.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, take the glasses off.
For the advisor, for the advisor. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thanks for coming.
Congratulations, baby.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on to a public hearing regarding the abandonment of a portion of Sperry Road. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion of support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tack?
Yes. Motion carries. So the public hearing is open. Now we'll have a public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on the Sperry Road abandonment? Sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rick Westfall. Address is 14 Santalina Trail, Battle Creek, Michigan. I'm here as a representative of Overflow Church, which is the one that has petitioned to have the road abandoned. For, I'll give you just a short story if I can. Nearly 10 years ago, a small group of people formed a new church, at that time known as Quenched Ministries. And they began looking for a place that they could meet on a regular basis. The timing was right for the Lord, and the city of Battle Creek abandoned several of their schools. And we were able to purchase one at a very good price. And the one we purchased was at Level Park inside of Pepper Township. The property that we are at now, we have been in for about that length of time, has been improved both inside and out, and has proven itself to be an asset to the community. So it is even better-looking than what it was when we took it over as a school, quite frankly. We have grown dramatically and are stretching the bounds of the church in attendance. Out of that, we have looked at the possibility of expanding. When the purchase was made, the property that the school was on was actually divided almost half and half on each side of Sperry Road. The physical school sits on what would be the east side of Sperry. There was a large area on the west side of Sperry that we're now using as a parking lot. Now, when we originally were there, purchased it, there were two houses on the west side of Sperry also. Those have been purchased and taken down. Both of them were in questionable condition at the time, and it was a good thing that they were now no longer there. We also purchased a property to the south and have expanded in those directions. At the present time, all the property around the improved part of that road is owned by Overflow Church. And it has become virtually our driveway. There's no other reason for going down it, because you can't get to anything but our property on it. One of the things that we have been kind of amiss is that during the time that we have been attempting, approximately five years ago, I started the process of trying to get it abandoned. And since then, they've actually repaved the road at the expense of the township and the people out there. Nothing that we could have anything to do with at the time, because we had already petitioned to have the road turned over to us. The hope in abandoning it would be that we would have the ability to make it one piece of property that we can use in the zoning for possible future expansion. There's a consideration of putting on another sanctuary in the property that we have now, although there's some things to go through to understand what that's gonna take to happen. And this is kind of a original step going into that process. As of the present time, we have actually talked to virtually any of the property owners that were within range, like 300 feet of the property, even the extended property of that road, and have gotten no negative feedback. The township, which I know that, that James Dyer has also talked to along with us at meetings, are very in favor of the fact that this could be done, not only to relieve you and them of the responsibility of the road, but it allows for the expansion of the church in that process. And our, we have proven to be good citizens of the area. So I'm just coming to you and asking that you please, you know, give your real consideration to this, as I think it would be to the benefit of not only our church, but the township, and relieve the county of the responsibility of this piece of road that nobody else can, nobody else normally would use anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding Sperry Road? Anyone? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public? I saw a hand. Was that just waving? You're just waving goodbye? Or did you want to speak? Alright. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
And support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Public meeting is closed. Now can I have a motion to approve the abandonment and discontinuation of jurisdiction and maintenance of the improved and certified portion of Sperry Road, south of Michigan Avenue, in the existing right-of-way to the southern end of Quenched Ministries' property line?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion of support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tack?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, next we have a Parks and Recreation's Master Plan Public Hearing. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tack?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Just give a brief overview of what this document is. Some of you may have seen it previously, others may have not. Again, Doug Farrell, Parks Manager for the County. The Parks and Rec Commission is bringing this forward to the community as well as to the Commissioners today. Spent about six months on it, meeting every month, setting timelines, reviewing mission vision of the department, and this is really our five-year roadmap of where the parks are gonna go. A couple of things we did to hear from the community before today, we did a public survey, had about 618, about, I suppose that's specifically 618 responses. And that's really good. That's 200 more than we had in our previous five-year plan. So we got a lot of feedback, and the two things we heard most often, and it's reflected in this plan, is maintaining and improving our current parks and preserving natural areas. So you'll see that in the goals. So our residents really told us, focus on what we have, and the Parks Commission has taken that and agrees that we need to make what we have even better and make sure we're maintaining it appropriately. But there's also a lot we can do more in preserving our natural areas, and I think in the next five years, that's something you'll see us focus on more. So hopefully, we can get into that as we continue to grow. Otherwise, you know, this document also serves a purpose for DNR. It is needed to apply for DNR grants. In the last couple of years, we've received approximately $500,000 from DNR, creating some, a new park in Albion. But since 1975, it's almost $1.5 million we've received from DNR from documents just like this. So a lot of work from the Parks Commission went into this, as well as GIS Department and community development as a whole. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment regarding the master plan? Anyone? Anyone? Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion? And support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The public meeting is closed. Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 through 2024 Calhoun County Parks and Recreation Master Plan as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion of support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tack?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, can I have a motion to approve the 2020 Census Proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion of support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we're gonna move on to the Consent Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda of the January 16th, 2020 Board of Commissioners Organizational Session as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion of support. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Special Committee Workshop and Board Reports. Commissioner Tompkins?
Thank you, Chair. Actually, I have a number of them, actually. First and foremost, the Senior Milletge had a special meeting on January 3rd regarding our Senior Strategic Project Fund. That has been debated. After much discussion and addressing the concerns of the members within the committee, we unanimously approved the creation of that Senior Strategic Project Fund, and have, will be recommending approval to us forthcoming. So that's good news on that. Really did a nice job of bringing everybody together for that, and really addressing those concerns. That was very good. The Trailway Alliance met on January 8th. As Doug indicated, we talked about the Albion Trailhead, and certainly the acquisition of the property is now complete. We would expect about three to four months before the major work begins. And also, we heard an update on the Albion City Trail portion as well, which is the one mile going to the city limit of the city going west towards Michigan Ave. Engineering portion is complete. Currently, they're uploading construction documents to the DNR website, and issuing bids for construction in the near future as well. And then finally, this evening, the Homer Lake Management Board met January 14th. This is our first meeting of the year. It was our organizational meeting. We held the election for officers for 2020, and they remain the same. I was elected as the Chair, the Secretary, and will continue to administer the Homer Lake Management Board.
And the Vice Chair and the Treasurer.
It was just all of I...
That's what you get for showing up, right?
At no cost to taxpayers, so that's a good thing as well. In addition, we also approved the 2020 budget and reviewed the final 2019 budget. The 2019 budget reflected, or 2019 year reflected the second consecutive year in conducting three treatments on the lake, which has never been done before, most ever in a year, as well as being under budget on the treatment cost, and doubling our loan payment for the second straight year. So normally, we pay $1,000 a year. We're paying $2,000 on that loan, so that's, again, very positive. And then we ended the year in the best financial state since the inception of the Lake Board. So again, very proud of certainly the board that I chair with the Homer Lake Board for the first time ever. We actually had kids out on the landing fishing. I mean, beforehand, it was full of lily pads, and there was no access to it at all. I took a picture of it this summer, just because it was a pretty proud moment to actually get there. Our, some of our plans for this year also include, with the permitting process, is actually whitening the channel from the first to second lake. So a lot of activity's been going on in our Homer Lake, and I'm just proud to be part of that board as we move forward in a very positive manner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Miller?
Yesterday, solid waste. Matt, biggest thing is, we are down just a little bit from previous year for recycling, but it's not very much. It's less than 10%. And we've also got a grant for sharps. It should be, have a press release coming out soon, but they're gonna have a drop-off at a regional center here in Marshallville 27. We're gonna have one at the City Hall in Albion, and they're gonna have one at the Police Department in the city of Battle Creek.
Nice.
So any sharps you have, we'll get rid of them right there. And we also had a fair CCAS meeting last night. A lot of things were discussed. The biggest thing is, they had over 1,460 cars coming through the Mary Mile, and we're supposed to have a fair book ready by middle of February. Don't have it wrote down with me. I believe it's the 30th of June we have to get back. We have the luncheon, the celebrity luncheon. Come up for...
Oh, the celebrity server. Yep.
So, come on out.
I'll buy you pie.
Alright.
Alright.
Exactly.
Commissioner Betty?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Chair Frisbee. The Visitor and Convention Bureau that I chair, and Kelly serves as the Treasurer, has been on a quest to complete a master plan and a strategic development plan, I guess I want to say. And, and we've just come to completion with that. We worked with a consultant. I was really happy with what we came up with. It's a 10-year plan, and it'll go to the Board in February for changes or tweaks or adaption and then, or adoption of it. And then I'll get back with you and let you know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move along, and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to County Administrator Controll, Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a written report that will go out tonight, and I'll just mention, it does contain several updates from boards and committees that met since the last December board meeting. I'll just list them in addition to what's already been reported. The Summit Point Board met on Tuesday, January 7th, which Commissioner Betty chairs that, and I'm the Treasurer. The county's hospital finance authority, that you may not hear about much, we offer financing at low bond rates for Oclon Hospital primarily. We met in our annual organizational meeting. The Veterans Affairs Committee met on January 8th. There's highlights in here from that. The Michigan Municipal Services Authority, which is a statewide, basically a virtual government that focuses on shared services, met on January 9. On January 15, the B.C. Cal Cal Inland Port Development Corporation Board, which manages the Foreign Trade Zone, met, and they are talking about how to do a lot more outreach to our local manufacturers, because the Foreign Trade Zone is a very much underutilized tool to save money for the manufacturers on reducing tariffs. And then finally, Commissioner Frisbee and I participated with the city of Battle Creek in the annual State of the Community address this past Monday. So we've attached a link to that presentation so that you can see what we highlighted. Only other thing I want to mention, at least last but not least, is circling back to the Consent Agenda, we wanted to talk about the annual census. That is a really important item for the county, and particularly for the city of Battle Creek this spring. And so, we have a group of our Census Committee here, if I could have them say a few words, and then...
Absolutely.
There is a proclamation for the census that was in the packet that we would like you to take action on. So I'd like to, if I could, for the last piece of my report, if you want to have Lucy Blair, who's...
Yeah.
Can introduce the crew?
Yeah, absolutely. So, we do have a little packet of information about the census. We wanted to put this together so that you guys have a really easy place to go and learn more about the 2020 census. Because as you go out into your districts, this is something that we really want to encourage people to know about and then respond when the time comes. So we have lots of information on here about how people can respond, what's the timeline, why it matters, and things like that. One of the things that we're doing is we have, we are an official census partner, and so we are here to work in the community to make sure that we're making connections with all of the other groups. There are a handful of other census groups in the county. One of the big reasons for that is that Battle Creek is right on the threshold of where block grants are considered. So for instance, I believe it's in 2018, they found that there are about 51,000 people in Battle Creek. The threshold for the block grants is actually 50,000. And so, the decennial census is really important so that we can make sure we have an accurate count of how many people are in Battle Creek, and then make sure that, you know, if we are above 50,000, we're covering that. We included a lot of paper in here, because what we're learning is that we're finding there are specific things that people, kind of keep them from responding to the census, things like apathy, distrusting government, not understanding personal benefits. So we try to talk about that in terms of why the census matters. It talks about, specifically in Calhoun County, what are the things that the decennial census impacts in our county. The other thing that I would mention, too, is that confidentiality is a big concern, and we do have a paper in here that addresses people's concerns about confidentiality as well. Ultimately, we are here as a resource for you. We're looking to reach the populations that we know are challenging, and are, definitely our committee reflects that, with Helen on the committee, Erin Edelson from Veteran Affairs. We also have someone from the Health Department who's helping us, and we're just making sure that if anyone has any questions about the census, you know that you can come to us. We're happy to help you. And then also, as we get closer, we'll be doing a lot more outreach. You have buttons. We hope you will wear them. We, you know, Calhoun counts, and so we're really excited to just help get the word out about the census and make sure that we have a complete count, accurate count here in Calhoun County.
Awesome.
Thank you. Alright.
Awesome.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright. Well, we had previously taken action to approve that proclamation and appreciate everybody's support in passing that. It is important that we are ready and prepared to count everyone in the county and I'm glad we passed that motion of support in that proclamation. Alright.
Thank you. So that would conclude my report and then we'll move on to new business, which we have nine items under new business tonight, starting with 12B1, page 39. The first item is just to approve the 2020 Board of Commissioners schedule, which we've sent out, you've seen previously. Really just two items of note. Our regular schedule is first and third Thursday, 7:00 PM. There are a couple of exceptions in addition to the first meeting in January, which we did not hold. In April, it will be the first, one meeting only and it will be on Tuesday, April 14. It's a Tuesday as required by the state for us to hold the equalization session. And then in July, we also only have one meeting. It is a Thursday. It's the third meeting on July 16. We deleted the first meeting basically due to the Fourth of July holiday.
Can I have a motion to approve the 2020 Board of Commissioners' meeting schedule as presented?
So moved to support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Item 12B2 is page 41. This is an MDOT contract through the Road Department. Our managing director, John Midgley, is here. Again, this is an example of a competitive grant process that our Road Department staff are very proactive, mainly through the Engineering Department and applying for. The contract is for three different tree removal projects. They're in, one in Bedford Township, one in Penfield Township, one in Athens Township. The total is about just under $48,000. The grant covers 90%. The county road department will cover 10%. That is budgeted and the contract is really the standard MDOT boilerplate with all of their specifications. And again, John's here to answer any questions related to that.
Can I have a motion to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation, number 19-5568 Contract for Road Safety Improvement and Tree Removal as Presented and authorize the Administrator Controller and Board Chair to sign on behalf of the county?
So moved. Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Any questions? Commissioner Tom.
Just a quick question. John, if I may. How extensive is their cutting process? When you talk about, I mean, is it a clear or what is the...
They try to take out the trees that they need by hazard.
Okay.
And the rest of the trip and try to walk.
Right.
Just try to open up a canopy a little bit.
Sure.
Park equipment or RVs can get down the road without, you know, the, the...
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Alright. Next three items are lease agreements. As we've highlighted in the past, the county tries to make use of any vacant space in our facilities for the use of nonprofits and other agencies that need space. So we have three examples of that. Item 12B3 is the first one. It's on page 69. It's a rental of about 1,200 square feet in the second floor of this building to Eagle, formerly Department of the DEQ. So this is about $16,800 a year. It's a month-to-month lease because that's how the state structures them for this calendar year. And Brad Wilkax, our Assistant County Administrator oversees and works with the state and tries to make sure that our leases are supported with our cost allocation plan. And we always say we're not making a profit, but we're trying to make sure that we're responsible in covering our costs.
Can I have a motion to approve the renewal of the State of Michigan Rental Agreement, number 11924-2020 as presented and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the county?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B4 is on page 78 and this is a new lease, albeit small and I'm going to ask Brad to describe this one. It's in our Albion building.
So this is really a lease where we don't always lease just for our financial gain. Sometimes we just want to be able to provide a footprint for a community service oriented organization, particularly in Albion where there's such a need. So we did a light remodeling on just 100 square feet, but it allows a nonprofit who's associated with Mishta to come in and work with very low-income persons to help to get rent subsidies. So we think that'll be a big benefit and it's, again, a small lease, only $1,272 a year, but we think it provides a good benefit to the community.
Can I have a motion to approve the rental agreement with Housing Choices LLC for the use of office space in the Albion Human Services Building as presented and authorize the Board Chairperson to sign the agreement on behalf of the county?
So moved. Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Just one question. How much empty space do we have in that building currently outside of that?
See, I was looking, in the Albion building, we're 100% occupied. In the toller building, we're occupied. And in the county building, we're 80% occupied. So it's usually for a landlord not ideal to rent out all of your space, but we take advantage, as Kelly said, of vacant space. These are just small leases, but if you look at the last 10 years, this year will approach $10 million in lease revenue over that period. So it's a pretty big business for us.
Which is great because that helps us with capital improvements down the road and...
We're essentially, as Kelly stated, we're taking vacant space and underutilized and unoccupied and turning it over and converting it to good use and productive.
It's always good business when you can take expense and turn it into a revenue. Good job. Alright. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B5 is a request for you to approve a renewal, basically a five-year lease with the County Land Bank Authority. Of course, one of our very important partners. And Krista Trout Edwards, the CEO of the Land Bank, is here today. Just a side note, I was invited to attend a meeting yesterday that the City of Battle Creek is having all of these roundtable discussions with stakeholders to talk about all of their strategies around their downtown, but also housing. A big focus on housing. And they talked a lot about the importance of the Land Bank in helping to make their neighborhoods better, specifically within Battle Creek. So they really appreciated the work that you're doing. So this is, again, five-year lease there on the second floor of this building, a little over 1,100 square feet. The lease rate is 1240 per square foot. Again, that's based on the county's cost allocation plan, which is done by a third party and audited. So those costs are substantiated. And with that, I'll ask Brad or Krista if you want to add anything to that.
Can I have a motion to approve the office space lease with the Calhoun County Land Bank as presented and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement on behalf of the county?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B6 is an update to the county's employee benefits policy and you may be thinking that we bring this one to you often. So anytime we have substantial change in benefits or sometimes when we negotiate different terms with our union groups, we want to make sure that our non-benefits policy also is changed so that we keep things consistent for all of our employees. The reason we put this here and not on the consent agenda is that we just wanted to make sure that you're aware of the main necessity for this is to incorporate a new agreement that we reached with the unions at the end of 2019 and that is, we are in the process of closing to new hires all of the county's defined benefit pension plans. So with that, we have all of our non-union and the court non-union employees also participate in that. So they will have the same deal where current employees will continue to participate in the pension. We will take some of the savings by closing that and paying the unfunded liabilities and be able to lower their contribution rate a little bit, but will not impact current employees and their benefits. But new hires hired after March 1st will go into the county's existing 401K plan where we provide a decent match and still allow for employees to have some retirement savings. So that needed to be incorporated into here and we ask for your approval of that. The next steps, just so you know, will be that we're trying to move forward with issuing pension obligation bonds for the two divisions that we're closing, the Sheriff's Deputy's Division and then this countywide division. So we're hoping at the next meeting on February 6th to ask you for the authorization to issue those bonds and then to publish the notice of intent so that we can ask for public comment within the next 45 days.
Can I have a motion to approve the changes to the Employee Benefits Policy, number 340, as presented? Have a motion support? Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Gatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you to Kim Arshambo for coordinating all of that work, meeting with each of our, what was it, six different union groups? Getting letters of understanding and it took a lot of work and assistance from MERS to convince that we were on a path that did not have a great solution within the defined benefit plan and the costs. So she did a wonderful job.
Good job.
Next item is 12B7. It's on page 103. This is coming from our Equalization Department and it continues the arrangement that we've had for several years where we contract for appraisal services. So we had an employee vacancy several years ago and where really we were unable to find qualified appraisers at the level of credentials required by the state to do certain of our appraisals, commercial, industrial, and then some of the agricultural, residential. So we've been contracting, we were previously contracting with a company called Appraisals Plus Group. They have a lot of business throughout the region and decided that they no longer want or could handle or didn't have the capacity to do our contract. So our Deputy Equalization Director, Tom Scott, and our Equalization Director, Matt Hanson, worked to select somebody else who could help us. The company we're recommending, it's actually an individual, his initials are CSZ, and he, his name's Charles Zemla. He provides this service to various counties, including Kalamazoo County. So we're basically, through our purchasing policy, piggybacking on the pricing and the contract terms that are in place for Kalamazoo and other counties. It's $154 per parcel with a not-to-exceed amount of $44,650, which still is a reduced cost from what we used to spend on doing the work in-house. And our equalization management can oversee that. It's, basically will take place over the summer. So we want the contract to be effective on April 1st and it does give us the opportunity to renew this for two more years if we're both satisfied with the work. So we're asking for approval of this contract with appraisal services with CSZ and our Corporation Counsel worked on the agreement itself, so he can answer any questions. But it's basically a similar contract, a professional services contract, independent contract to what we've used in the past.
Can I have a motion to approve the professional services agreement with CSZ Services LLC as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackin?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright. Item 12B8 starts on page 112. This is the agreement we've been talking about to get started with the Emmett Township Local Road Improvement Project. So this is the actual contract itself between the county and the township. So what you have already approved related to this is a resolution last year for the Road Department, which was a notice of intent for them. Once we issue bonds, for them to reimburse their budget for any work done before that. And then you also approved in November the bid, construction bid, that relates to this project because we wanted to lock in the pricing for three years with Lakeland Asphalt to do the work. So those two pieces have been done. This contract would be the next step and then after that, we would need to move forward with the authorization and notice of intent to issue capital improvement bonds for the county's 50% of the work to be done. I just want to reiterate that without the township, without the county Road Department being a department of the county, if we had a separate road commission, they would not have the ability to finance a project this big. And so, that's another benefit. And you've seen that in Jackson County. They have been able to do a lot of road improvement using the county's bond rating and the county's debt capacity. We do not have high debt by any means. We have, we're well within the debt limit and so we're able to help finance these capital improvements. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Corporation Counsel to walk you through the terms because I know there's, probably the most concern is that the county's protected for liability and for cost overruns.
That certainly is, was our primary concern in dealing with this contract. We, similar to other contracts that we've had in the past, the township wanted a provision that indicated that their, the costs of their work would not exceed the $14,320,000 amount that would represent their half, if you will, of the engineering costs that were originally estimated for the project. And that is reflected in the beginning of paragraph 3 of the complaint, of the contract. But later on in that paragraph, there are provisions that indicate that likewise, those cost guarantees are premised upon the bid that we approved from Lakeland, which if you remember, was approximately, give or take some dollars, about $2 million less than the engineering estimates. So there is some, you know, built-in contingency, if you will, there. But we've also indicated, the change that I made to the contract was indicate that the county's dollar amount contributed towards this would not exceed the amount that was contributed by the township. So there's a true 50% sharing. Not a situation where there'd be a cap for the township and an unlimited amount for the county. We also, I also included a provision that indicates that to prevent those kind of overruns, the Road Department commits, as we bill on a monthly basis those costs, we have to give a percentage completion regarding that project. You know, we're 50% complete and we've spent, kind of like what we get on our financial returns. We're 50% through the project, we've spent 45% of the budget. Or we're 50% complete, we spent 65% of the budget. So the idea being, and there's a provision that says, should the county notify to the township that it believes the total project cost will be exceeded, the parties will meet to discuss and agree upon a modification of either the scope of work or the maximum township cost. So we'll be, on a monthly basis, that kind of thing will be monitored. And I understand that the township will also be having their road committee or someone representing them monitoring that as well. The main, the main, other main concern was really in the road warranties. And there's a provision that recognizes that things like cracking and normal wear and tear are not guaranteed, but that workmanship and materials are. And one of the main changes, and really it's reflected in the bid to Lakeland that talks about all the testing that's going to be done onsite at the asphalt plants to determine that the material that's being delivered and used in the project is going to be adequate for its, for the scope of work that's going to be performed. And we believe, and I think in discussions with John, John Midgley of the Road Department, that that's really our main, our main control. There'll be almost a million dollars of this contract will go to testing to assure that the material being used is adequate to the task. Those are the main components of the agreement. We're still anticipating some give and take on, I hope, minor points with the township. And the resolution provides that if there are minor changes, that between Kelly and I, we have the authority to approve those changes and have that contract signed ultimately by the Board Chair once it's in a form that's acceptable to Kelly and I.
I just want to summarize the scope of work. It is a three-year phased project.[1766.06] We attach the maps. Those are subject to change. The, the intent is to meet with the township each year and refine that based on the condition of the roads. It is, is a 50-50 cost share. And one of the things I noticed was, so when we did, the county has about 800 miles of just local roads that we own and maintain. So with the work already done in Penfield Township with all of their local roads, Bedford with all of their local roads, if you add the 75 miles of Emmett Township's roads, at the end of that, we will have improved 200 of the 800. So 25% will have been resurfaced, which I think is, you know, a pretty spectacular task, given the limited funding that we have to work with. And that's the reason we need to, you know, finance this. Emmett Township, that's the reason they needed to ask the voters for approval of what could be close to three and a half mils of additional taxes over the next 15 years to pay for that. And the voters were willing to do that. So biggest project by far that the, our road department is undertaken. And so we ask for your support in more ways than just the contract.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the Emmett Township Local Road Maintenance and Improvement Agreement as presented, subject to minor modifications and/or amendments acceptable to the administrator controller and the corporation counsel, and to further authorize the administrator controller to sign any amendments to the scope of work or the specific work to be performed, so long as said amendments do not increase the total sum budgeted for the work set forth in the agreement?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion support. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I got one big issue with the entire thing. And I agree with what you're saying. You know, there's, but it still clearly states in here, to the extent the cost is completing the work as set forth, this agreement exceeds the amount of such additional costs shall be sole responsibility of the county. And our policy is 50-50. And we've been told that Act 51 will not let us cover any more than 50% of the cost. And the only way I would support this is try to table this and take that language right out of there. Because any more than 50%, I'm not okay with because it's not fair to the rest of these townships.
I think what I, what I would hope you would do, Commissioner Miller, would be to read the contract in its entirety and to understand that in some, sometimes a paragraph gives one thing and another paragraph takes it away. And, and while it's, while it's true that it does say that in paragraph three, that, that same paragraph continues on to say essentially what you just said, that, that the, the county cannot be responsible for more than the amount that, that Emmett Township pays. And I want to find the exact language, but...
If that's in there, then why does that wording even in there that would be sole responsibility?
That was language that was proposed, that was language that was proposed by, by Emmett Township. And I have no, I have no concern with that language being in there as long as we are able to maintain the language that, that I, that I prepared. I'm still trying to find the language that I, I thought I had marked. Yeah, I'm, but the specific paragraph.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I'm looking for the...
In Exhibit A.
Exhibit A?
Well, it's, it's, if you go later in the paragraph three, it does state, "The township agrees that the county's cost to complete the scope of the work specified in Exhibit shall likewise not exceed $14,320,000 for a total project cost."
And the important thing was to, was to tie it to the Lakeland bid, which is really what determines the, really what's going to determine the, the cost of the contract. And, and it was the township's preference to tie that to a number. My preference was to tie it to a percentage. And both concepts are contained in the, in the contract. And they cover, they protect the contract, the county adequately in, in, in that respect.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
I, I'm not happy with that language in there. So I'm not going to support this.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I'm curious. This is more an issue of curiosity for me, considering what you just said regarding our, the extent of our liability. So the, the revenue raised by Emmett Township, the, the total amount is going to be 28 million. The engineering estimate was 24 and some change. And then Lakeland's bid was 21. The difference between the total amount raised and Lakeland's bid is, you know, just over 7 million, which, yeah, at a 50-50 split, you know, about $3.5 million per unit, which, you know, our liability aside, Emmett Township's still going to raise those funds. If they're not going to use them, or do you, what's the?
I would anticipate.
How are those funds?
I would anticipate that they would use those for, for their own oversight of the project and also for maintenance of the, the project once it's completed. Because that's going to be a necessary component of making sure. Because, you know, no road, no road keeps its integrity if it's not maintained.
So they can still use, those, those funds though are still dedicated, you know, the original?
I'll answer, I'll add to that maybe. So Emmett Township had to, basically, we had to estimate the bid, which is why we have this high amount of 28 million. At the time, this went to the voters last year. And so they wanted to be protected. So the, the ballot language says that they, they would levy or they would issue bonds to finance amount not to exceed and that the estimated millage would be 3.4. So the voters only approved their authority to issue bonds. When they issue bonds, those, that money will be restricted to roads. And they can only levy enough debt millage for what it takes to pay the debt service. So all those things have to line up. They have not been determined yet, but they need to be within the next week or so. So they won't issue any more bonds than they need. And whatever they issue has to be restricted for the purpose that the voters approved. And they're not able to just take the money, put it into the general fund. Likewise, the county has to decide exactly how much we're going to issue in bonds because the same restrictions would apply. We can't, you know, we can't issue more than we can spend in the next three years on the roads. So this amount might be high and the, the bond authorizing resolution that we bring you in February may also be high because it will be a not to exceed. So it's basically to give the public time to comment on a not to exceed amount. And we may lower that. We don't want to go into debt for any more than we need either. So this, this is a high amount and both sides need to decide exactly how much to issue within those restrictions.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask Jim, can the language be changed? Even, I understand that there's, you know, another paragraph and there's covering it, but if it gets changed, would it affect it that much?
That's one of the reasons that we, that we had a provision in the resolution to adopt that gives us the ability, Kelly and I, the ability to make minor changes. Because when you're, whenever you're negotiating a contract, those kind of things do come up. So yes, that, that, that language can be changed. As I said, I'm, I'm absolutely comfortable with the way the, the contract is, is written right now, that we have sufficient protections, that we will not be paying more than what Emmett Township pays.
Can I make a motion to table this and just see if we can get that, Emmett Township to take that out, that one sentence?
Have a motion to table on the floor and second.
For.
We need to take a...
I wouldn't recommend that you take that action because actually, your action in approving this language gives me substantial leverage in the discussions with the township. Tableting it will only put that at in doubt. It will put your approval in doubt.
So I can...
Commissioner, well?
And, and, and in addition, time isn't, as, as Kelly was reminding me, time is important for a couple of reasons. We're running, we're running low on time to, we have to have an approved contract before we can pursue the bond funding, number one.
Correct.
And also, we want to get Lakeland under contract. There... And, and we need to, there's, there's, there's a provision in the contract that provides for us to, to, to build to the project amounts that are done for engineering, tree trimming, things like that that need to start. I think we're actually going to start tree trimming. We anticipate starting tree trimming in mid-February to get this project done. So I would, I would not recommend a motion to table this for purposes of entering into negotiations, further negotiations with the township that are going to occur anyway.
I think we have to address the motion first. So are you willing to withdraw? Are you willing to withdraw your second?
Yeah, we can have, yeah, we can have discussion on the...
Can we have discussion on this motion?
Yeah.
We can have discussion on this motion.
Motion to table. You can discuss a motion to table.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, and just, yeah. I must tell you, based on the concerns that I had originally originated, I feel comfortable with the language because it's been indicated as such that the provision that I read out of this paragraph does cover the fact, even though it does state at the, at the top, that it's, that they're not going to pay more than, but it does state in the paragraph, as was indicated as such that I read, that the, depending on those, those updates, that the scope of the work will have to change because by no means are we going to exceed 50%. Because obviously, Act 51 doesn't provide that. So I feel comfortable now with the language that you've been able to specify that for me. Because initially, when I first read it, the only language I saw was that top portion in paragraph three. And then I was trying to locate if there was an alternative and I hadn't located it. So...
And as, I, I think what you need to understand is this is going to be a process that will be managed.
Yeah.
Rather than, it, it's not like you're buying a, a building that, that is completed and you know exactly what you're buying and you, you've done all your due diligence to determine, this is what you want to buy and this is what you want to pay for. This is a, this is a, this gives us the ability to manage the contract in a way that will have a good result for both the township and the county.
Well, and I, and again, like I said, that language is important. I mean, I don't have an issue with supporting this, this moving forward because of the fact, if we find that the, that the scope of the work is exceeding what the bond issuance is for, we'll scale back that scope potentially, correct? Because that's, because you'll be managing that on an ongoing basis. That's why I said I feel comfortable with it.
We'll have to do that.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You have to, to stay within the provisions.
But, but again, remember, the first step in doing that was engaging Lakeland in a three-year, in a three-year contract. Where they're, they're required to, to perform that scope to a contract amount that is within the, the amount that we've, we've determined we, we're going to fund. So we're covering ourselves in, in, in as many possible ways as you can cover yourself. Is it possible that everything could go wrong? Sure. But that's not, it won't be a function of the language of this contract. If, if a project like this blows up, it'll be because of some unforeseen occurrence in the market for asphalt perhaps.
Commissioner Vetti?
Thank you, Chair Frisbee. So, Counselor, did, in, so in that piece of language, did I understand you to say that even if we were to approve this tonight, that you could go back and, and like wordsmith that? Or is that a complete misunderstanding on my part?
No, we, we do, I do anticipate that there'll be some, some of that regardless of, of the outcome of this particular motion. But, because that always happens when...
Okay.
You know, unless we, we had had an approved contract by, because whenever two municipalities are contracting, this always happens because we don't, neither party has a unitary decision maker that can make a decision without meeting in a public, in a public meeting like this. So you, and it's difficult when you have to, you're essentially negotiating in the open. And that, that makes that very difficult to accomplish.
Gotcha. So with, with that being said, I feel comfortable with the understanding that, you know, you are going to work on, on making sure that this is clear and that we absolutely, you know, follow what is set forth and that, you know, we won't overspend and they won't overspend.
The provision of the contract that is, that is perhaps the most important and addresses the concerns that you've raised says as follows, "The township agrees that the maximum cost guarantees contained in paragraphs three, five, and eight, or elsewhere in this agreement, are premised upon the Lakeland agreement and the county's estimates of the engineering, testing, and administrative costs required to compete this, complete the scope of the work specified in Exhibit A. The township agrees that the county's cost to complete the scope of work shall likewise," and that's a reference above to the paragraph that you're concerned about, "shall likewise not exceed $14,320,000 for a total project cost of $28,640,000." And then, and then the very next paragraph of that section discusses the, the progress payments and the monthly billing and the necessity to agree to modifications if things are not going as we thought that they would.
Correct.
And, and, and again, this is, this is not going to be a situation where we're going to do the work and suddenly at the end, everybody's, you know, the billing occurs and, and everybody's like, oops, we're X number of dollars over, over scope or over cost.
I would add that the underpinnings of Act 51 really are the ultimate protection because we can't violate the law.
Right.
So we can't enter into a contract knowingly violating a federal, a state law, right? So if it comes to cost overruns, we have to agree on those collectively, not, as Jim said, on our own or they're on their...
Basics covered, but there's just a loophole that I'm really not comfortable with here.
But, but I, I don't see it as a loophole. I see Act 51 as the stopgap that backs everything that we're doing here. And when I, I'm, I'm concerned about slowing up this process when we've, in the middle of it, when we've already approved multiple steps of this process. And the timing of it could be bad and not allow us to move forward. And I think that sends a signal to the residents of Emmett Township that suddenly we have a problem that I'm not sure is a problem. I, I'm not convinced there's a problem here. I'm convinced that the underpinnings of Act 51, that your concerns about paying no more than 50%, are, are what guide us. In spite of anything here, we can't, we can't exceed that. That's just the law. So I think at the end of the day, when you come down to it, it's going to be you paid this amount, you paid this amount, and they're going to be exact or pretty darn close. So I'm, I'm concerned that we put the brakes on something that has, has already been pushed through and committed to before tonight. And, and I don't agree that we have a loophole that anybody can stop. We can just say, we're not paying, we're not paying it. And I, and I think we're committed to that. As commissioners saying, we're not, we already set a policy. We had a great debate about policy 509 and it's 50%. We're not paying, not paying anymore, not paying less. I don't, I don't think we would move forward or support moving forward and saying, we're going to pay 51%. I, I don't, it's not going to happen. So...
And frankly, I, I think what that portion of the contract really says and why it's important for the township and, and why I'm not concerned about it is, what it really says is, if you screw up town, county, if you mismanage this project, it's not going to be on us, the township. And frankly, I think we need to stand behind that kind of, that kind of a statement. That if, if, if it's our fault...
We own the road.
Then, then the township's not going to pay. And I understand that from their perspective. And, you know, generally, I don't like to acknowledge the other party's concerns, particularly in a public meeting, but I understand where the township would come from for that. Because we're the ones managing the contract. We should be responsible to make sure those cost overruns don't occur. And I'm confident that, that John and his engineering staff are going to be able to do that.
Commissioner Smith?
So just to square it up, because there's a lot of numbers floating around, the 50-50 cost share is carried all the way through the $28,640,000.
Correct.
It doesn't stop at, or is all the way through it. So if the, if the total cost of the project runs anything below that, it's a 50-50. That's fair. So that's...
That's the way, that's the way we intend it to be.
You're good. Okay.
It's very difficult to predict the future and we're trying to do it in this contract. But we can't predict it, but you can control it. And that's, that's, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I would agree. All right. So we have a motion to table and we had a support. So first, we will vote on that. Madam Clerk, why don't you please take the role?
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
No.
Commissioner Vetti?
No.
Commissioner Hatcher?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
No. Motion fails. All right. We'll go back to the original. I believe we have a motion and a support on the original motion. Do we? Yes, we do? All right. Is there any other discussion on the original motion? It was read. All right. Madam Clerk, please take the role?
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. The last item under new business tonight, and after that, that will conclude my report, is 12B9. This is an item that was added and an amended packet was sent out yesterday. And it's really because it's an item that we should have brought to you before the end of the year. So this is... before the end of the year. So this is the prosecutor's memo of understanding between the prosecutor and the attorney general. And it relates to two contracts that we brought to you already before the end of the year related to the sexual assault kit investigative unit. So this is basically the overall arrangement that, by which the state agrees to reimburse prosecutor and the county for all of the costs. And it, as was mentioned before, the end of the year, when we talked about, when you approved the contract with our current investigator, Jerry Stonebreaker, and the agreement that called for the victim's support with Bronson Hospital. So those two pieces have been done. This one also allows for the prosecutor to have two investigators for the fiscal year that already started October 1 through the, this coming September. So it's kind of the overarching agreement that needs to be in place. And we hadn't brought that to you.
That is correct. We have one investigator right now working with the attorney and speaking to the attorney and the AG's office. We're expecting to be done with this in October of this year. We need the extra investigator to basically move things along. They have quite a few more cases to, to get to. And some of our suspects, some of our victims are nationwide. Again, it's being covered by the attorney general's office. All the costs, all the expenses are covered by the attorney general's office. And we had been approved for two investigators from the very beginning of this. So we're just bringing in the second investigator now because it's necessary.
Can I have a motion to approve the memo of understanding between the Department of Attorney General and the Calhoun County Prosecutor's Office as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Next is citizens' time. The same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your comments to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Does anyone would like to address their commissioners?
My name is Jamie McChell. I'm a Penfield resident.
Pull it down just a little bit. There you go. Thank you.
When you were, it's, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for standing strong. My husband was in construction for 40 years. So I understand your, I understand your reservation and I think you're right. Also, were there any other bids taken other than Lakeland, like by Globe or Michigan Paybean or?
We can talk to you after the meeting. It's not a question and answer session.
Oh, okay.
We'd be more than happy to answer those questions after the meeting. Is there anybody else that'd like to address their commissioner? Anybody else? All right. We'll move on. Commissioners' time. Commissioner Miller?
I'd like to thank everybody who came out and expressed their feelings on this Second Amendment sanctuary push. I think we're strong supportive of your Second Amendment rights. And I would like to put a motion out to put something on the agenda for the first February, meeting in February. And I give, hand everybody a packet out. And I would like, I don't like the word sanctuary. Sanctuary does not make, sound good to me. But I would like to make a resolution to make a-
So you can just put a formal request in to have that on the next, next agenda?
I'd like to dip that under and just make a recognition that we-
All right.
-hand the Constitution-
Not a problem. All right. Nope, you can just submit it as a, as a consideration. Commissioner Vetti?
Thank you Chair Frisbee. I just wanted to send out my sincerest thank you to all of you for supporting me. I do really appreciate that. And I think you all know how much I love and appreciate you. I really love this job. I enjoy my time with all of you. And what I think is really awesome is that while we don't always agree, which we just saw, we do respect one another and we do work still well with one another to support the citizens of the county. And that makes me very proud to be a part of this group. And I thank you very much. I really do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Hatcher?
I would like to take this time because we won't be here. And I wanted to wish our fellow commissioner Jake Smith a happy birthday next week, a little bit early.
I was going to say that next.
He's going to be all of 21.
Buy him his first drink.
Buy him a drink.
All right.
Vegas baby. Happy birthday Jake.
All right. Go ahead.
I've been approached by MDOT. There's been a, they've done a study. They're going to talk about reconstructing the cloverleaf all the way up, is it, to Sherlock area. And MDOT's proposing on eliminating the bridge over 15 mile, over 94, and not replacing it. There is actually, I almost forgot this. The 23rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Marshall Township Hall. Everybody here's invited to come. They did a survey. I talked to them. I'm supposed to have another meeting with, guy's name's Hackworth. They have over 500 vehicles a day cross this bridge on a daily basis. They do not know how many emergency vehicles there are. They're wanting to reroute everybody from up to Vernon Road to 13 Mile Road to L Drive. That'd be eight to 10 miles out of people's way. And for farmers, it's going to be really bad for them. Our Marshall Township Fire Department takes care of Convis Township for the fire. So it's going to be a big impact to anybody in Marshall or Convis Township. So if you have any questions or concerns, invite me out there on the 23rd.
Tommy, repeat that date again. I'm sorry.
The 20, the 23rd.
January.
Jan's 3rd.
Thanks for bringing that up. I was going to remind you too of it. I really think it's important that we get the sheriff and we get the fire department and mark from Marshall firefighters, ambulance to speak to that and potential actions that that would cause them to take to be able to get around as well. This is, this is an issue that if they're looking for public input and they're asking, I think we need to provide it. And we need to promote it to our citizenry that this is an opportunity for them to speak as well and let them know, let MDOT know what they think. So it's a big change.
It's a very big change. It's a main route to Cornwall's up in that area.
Right.
It's going to be a big impact on anybody. A big, and I understand that there is issues with the cloverleaf or worked out there a lot of times. And I think nine, 90% of the accidents on the cloverleaf are due to careless driving.
Right. People are going too fast and tip over. So, all right. Thanks, thanks for bringing that up. I appreciate it. Any other, okay, we'll move on to claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve claims payable for December 13th, 2019 through January 13th, 2020 in the amount of $4,691,890.95 as presented?
So moved.
Support.
No motion support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any announcements? And now from the 7th District?
That's right.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Right. It's always, it's, as I always say, it's happened in the 7th. There's always things going on. First and foremost, this coming Monday, January 20th, the Third Annual MLK Community Dinner will take place at the Marshall Opportunity High School. Again, it's from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. Everyone is invited. The event is free as we celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Food, free dinner, lots of activities to go. So certainly, if you have that opportunity, please come out on that. And also on Saturday, February 1st, Albion's Winter Fest will take place and will be kicked off by the annual cardboard classic sled race, which will begin at 10:00 AM at Victory Park Hill. And obviously, that's contingent upon snow. However, I've been told irrespective of that, that you can still do your cardboard sled and they'll still be judged. So I've had the honor the last two years to be a judge there. So it's certainly, it's really a cool time when the kids put together their, their sleds and whatnot. So afterwards, there are a number of events throughout the day as downtown businesses. Again, it's just kind of a correlation of a lot of things, activities and a lot of hot chocolate and everything else going on. So if you get an opportunity, come February 1st to Albion and see what's going on there. So that is my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody? Any other announcements? Commissioner Hatcher?
And also too, a little bit closer to home, I did want to announce too, that in celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King's, in honor of the celebration of his birthday, Ann J. Kellogg is going to also on Monday, January 20th, 9:15, Community is Welcome. They will be having a, a dinner, okay, and that's, I'm sorry, a breakfast. And that's at 9:15. Also at 9:00, so there's two of them in that same district in my district. But Mirnaugh Church of God and Christ is also having an MLK breakfast. So that's a little bit closer to home also too in Albion.
See if they can't join you for one of those, if work allows. Any other announcements? Just follow up on the celebrity server. It's January 31st. It's Friday. Sheriff Saxon and I always man one of the areas out there and I invite everybody, anyone from the room to join us. We fill that, that section up and Commissioner Frisbee buys the pie, even for Sheriff Saxon's visitors. So the pie itself is worth the visit. But come out and support the fair. I know Tommy is very passionate about the fair and, and supporting that and the work that he does there. We have a great history of, of the oldest fair in the state of Michigan. So what we can do to support it and the children and their, and what they do there, I hope you can join us. I think it starts at 11:00. So come join us and have free pie. Any other announcements? All right. Thank you for, everyone for coming and we enjoyed your presence. Have a great night. This meeting-